Whereas the Falls Church Public School Board has convened a closed meeting on this date pursuant to an affirmative recorded vote and in accordance with the provisions of the Virginia Freedom of Information Act, and whereas Section 2.2-3711B of the Code of Virginia requires the certification by this school board that such closed meeting was conducted in conformity with Virginia law, now therefore be it resolved that the Falls Church Public School Board hereby certifies that to the best of each member's knowledge. One, only public business matters lawfully exempted from open meeting requirement by Virginia law were discussed in the closed meeting to which this certification applies. And two, only such public business matters as were identified in the motion convening the closed meeting were heard, discussed, or considered.
Thank you, Mr. Kimball.
Mr. Ankuma. Mr. Castillo. Ms. Carney.
Yes.
Mr. Lawrence. Ms. Ward. Mr. Webb.
Yes.
Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am. Would you all join me? Our pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you. Next we come to the adoption of the agenda. May I have a motion to adopt the agenda?
Second.
Thank you, Mr. Lawrence and Ms. Carney. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstentions? All right, we have an agenda. Now we come to item five, public comments and requests. Mr. Kimball, do we have any requests to speak to this?
But we do have a letter. It was, it's response from the Fairfax County School Board where-
Any other letters?
No, sir.
Wait, sorry. The next item is the letter to the school board from Fairfax County- Excuse me, from, thank you, from the Fairfax County Public Schools regarding our letter that was regarding some unfortunate events at the Thomas Jefferson High School for Science and Technology. That is in for your information, and I was gratified that they responded. I would thank Ms. Carney again for raising this and spurring us to make a comment. I think that's important, and I hope that this will be something that will be educational and beneficial for us all going forward. Next, item six on our agenda, we have no recognitions and reports, and so now we come to the consent agenda. And would seek unanimous consent to adopt the consent agenda. Seeing no objection, it is adopted. Now we come to item eight, Section 801, authorization for use of contingency funds for hiring. Dr. Jones.
This has just given me the authority to use contingency funds if we should need to hire a new teacher or a teacher in a para. As I've shared with you before, we are watching kindergarten very closely, and this just keeps the school board from, you know, having an emergency meeting quickly and allows me, of course, to message you first that numbers are up and that we need to hire a teacher anywhere in the school division, but it just helps us, once we know we need to hire somebody, we need to do it quickly, especially this time of the year. Thank you.
Any questions?
Question. Is this just this one-time authorization, or are we looking for something that would allow you to take advantage of this throughout the year? And especially, and I've heard Ms. Hyde mention it a couple of times, where spring, sort of, as the school year winds down, you have the opportunity to hire, you get some good candidates, but with no commitment from the budget, you're not sure what to do. Would this help?
This is really just for the summer, and I would prefer that it be that way because contingency does have to go before the school board. So what I'm asking for really is pretty specific for, to get the school year started. We meet often enough during the school year that if we had a system that went out or something enormous, we would be able to bring, I would be able to bring that to you.
And also, in terms of the issue that Ms. Hyde brought forward, in terms of spring hiring, that would actually be an issue for the following fiscal year when those salaries would go into effect.
Mr. Chairman, I move that the school board give the superintendent authorization to use contingency funds for the hiring of additional staff if needed for the 2015-16 school year.
During the summer months? All right, we have a second from Mr. Webb. All in favor? Aye. All opposed? Any abstentions? Thank you. Now we come to section, to item 8.02, second reading and adoption of policies 4.8 and 5.11. Is this you, Dr. Jones, or is this Mr. Horn?
This is Mr. Horn.
As these are second readings, I'll leave the descriptions brief. They were two policies. One, adjusting, adapting the language in the budget policy to include changes made by the General Assembly this year, and policy 5.11, defining some characteristics regarding school visitors, what's allowed, what's not, what the definition of trespassing is. Previous policy was void of specific definitions that are useful to school-based administrators in monitoring their own campus for safety. No additional changes from the previous reading.
Thank you, Mr. Horn. Any questions? Okay.
No. Mr. Chairman, I move that the school board approve second reading and adoption of policies 4.8, annual budget, and 5.11, visitors to the schools as presented.
Thank you, Mr. Lawrence. Thank you, Mr. Webb. All in favor? Aye. All opposed? Any abstentions? All right, that carries. Just a quick question, how are our no trespassing sign initiative going?
We have those at most of our exits, entrances, but Sevi Padilla will be double-checking all the buildings before the year starts.
Excellent. Excellent. Thank you. Now we come to item 8.03 on the agenda, adoption of the PPEA guidelines. Dr. Jones?
Mr. Horn.
Oh, Mr. Horn again. I'm sorry, I was head down there.
Which I just love.
The draft that you see before you is now the third time that you've seen this document in its substantial form. First on June 9th, and then last week amended by Troutman Sanders to reflect a little bit of language that they were more comfortable with. And then tonight, the substantial change is the insertion of the actual fees that would be charged for an unsolicited proposal. Those were bulleted blanks the last time you saw it. So based on advice of council and their experience in public-private projects, the numbers were inserted there, 7,500 as a review fee, and then up to 25,000 for the proposal review. So an initial fee and then an additional. Of course, the language is still there, providing the discretion to charge more should there be actual costs over the 25,000, and the language still exists to allow for fees in a solicited proposal should we ever decide that was the most appropriate path. These are now ready for adoption, and they are identical in form and function to the version that will be presented to the council on Monday, with the exception of where it says "school board," it says "city."
Thank you, Mr. Horn. Any questions?
I just have one question, which is, this same format has been presented to city council, but they've not yet adopted it.
Correct.
And so do we have a kind of a chicken-and-egg thing going where if we adopt these tonight and then they adopt something with changes, we'll have to come back and adopt those same changes as long as they're not to superintendent, you know, whatever? Is that kind of the plan?
If they adopted substantive changes, it would be prudent for the two bodies to discuss how that would impact the joint project.
Right.
It wouldn't necessitate the school board changing theirs.
Right.
But the RFP language will specify which set of guidelines would rule the day-
Right.
-should there be a conflict between the two. So the city may decide that it's in its long-term interest regarding PPA projects to have different language, but the school board's version, should they conflict based on the current draft of the PPA, or of the RFP, excuse me, lots of acronyms, would be the presiding document.
Okay.
So does it force you to come back and redo it again next week? The answer should be no.
Okay, great. Thanks.
But just to be clear, these, we're not chiseling these in stone tablets. They are changeable.
They are changeable and flexible up until the point of the release of a project or the acceptance of an unsolicited.
Okay. All right, well, let's hope that we don't have to cross that bridge, so. All right. May I have a motion on the adoption of the PPA guidelines?
Mr. Chairman, I move that the school board adopt the PPEA guidelines as presented.
Thank you, Ms. Ankuma.
Second.
Thank you, Mr. Lawrence. All in favor? Aye. All opposed? Any abstentions? Very well, thank you. Now we come to item 8.04, the George Mason MEH RFP update.
Let's just recap, if you would like to recap what we talked about in the words that-
Okay. Happy, happy to do so. As you may know, we have just been reviewing the George Mason MEH RFP in our work session this evening. The next step will be for the two bodies to submit by Friday, it is hoped, comments and questions in anticipation of a joint meeting that will be scheduled for Monday, the 20th. The next step will be to integrate changes that come from both bodies into the RFP. The hope is that the process of doing that will be speedy enough that it might be possible for the school board to vote as soon as the 21st of July on the draft RFP. At this point, the city council is scheduled to vote on the 27th, and the schedule now holds that the RFP will issue on July 30th. Is that correct, Dr. Jones?
That is correct.
We have received useful and valuable public input on the process. For example, one of the things that I think we will see in the ultimate RFP that goes out will be, and I think this is consistent with our desire to have as broad a palette for the bidders to paint on as possible, so if renovation is something that a bidder wishes to entertain and propose, that will be absolutely permissible under this. I think that is a useful and valuable alteration to the original draft. Again, the point of this RFP is not to spec the solution that we want. We're not finalizing a design and then seeking bids. We are looking for solutions. We're defining very basic requirements. We need a school expansion at MEH. We need a larger and more modern George Mason High School. We need development to finance that, and then we'll need a financing model that is acceptable and sustainable over the long term for the city. Those are the three basic, three legs of the stool that we're going to be asking for in this RFP, and when we get responses back during the initial conceptual phase of the PPEA, then we'll have some meat on the bones, and I think it will be much easier for everybody. You know, the chicken-and-egg problem will begin to resolve itself as we see something concrete that we can begin to engage in, and then depending on what the solution is and whether it's acceptable, we would move on to the next phase where we seek more detailed submissions, and that happens in December. Any other comments from my colleagues on this, or Dr. Jones?
Well-stated.
All right. And now, the engine that drives much of this is 805, enrollment information and update from 2014-15, and some crystal ball gazing.
Crystal ball gazing, is it? I do have two different attachments on here. The first one is the enrollment and housing information, and one of the reasons I wanted to put this on the agenda is part of this RFP discussion, people have asked a lot of great questions, came up at the Saturday Town Hall, just wondering how, where do we get our numbers from? What kind of information do we use? And I think it's important for the community to know that we are very thoughtful and try to be as thorough as we can. On the first attachment that's on the left, this is showing you a cumulative tenure growth, and then you can see what Weldon, and this is only Weldon Cooper, which means that there's no economic development or anything in this projection. But it's just a fascinating chart in the sense that what you're looking at is the lower dark blue line is the population growth of the city, and the top line is actually the school population growth. And it takes a little while to kind of sit and process that, but what it really means is grandpa, grandpa, grandma, grandma. Grandma and grandpa move out, mom, mom, and two kids move in. So you have a change there, but your school population just went up because a kid and a kid, but your overall city population didn't necessarily increase. And I think this is probably the comment we hear the most often around the city, is people used to be the only family on the block, and now, oh my gosh, there are children in every house. And there may have been two people in the house, or three people, there's still three people, but now they have a school-aged child. And so when you look at the projections going out, I know when Mr. Shields and I have talked about this, it's kind of takes your breath away, but it's happened in all of Northern Virginia, it's not just us. When I say all of Northern Virginia, northern, northern Virginia, Arlington, Alexandria, Fairfax County are all seeing growth trends like this. But it is definitely on an upward trend, and you can, it gives you an idea of what's happening. Behind that is the Mixed Use Development Fiscal Impact Report, and Mr. Shields and I referenced this at the Town Hall on Saturday because so many people, I think in the community, don't really understand the level and the depth of the work that the city is doing, really trying to understand what's happening in the city, what is the net revenue they get off of the developments that are coming in, working really closely with myself and also other staff that are correlating where every little child comes from and where their home is, and it lets us look at single-family homes, it helps drive our property information. But it also, this is where we go in, and we're working with the city, are able to project when a new economic development like Lincoln or Rushmark are coming online, how many children do we need to think about and plan for, and not only in the budget, but in seats for kids, you know, capacities at the building level. And what you'll see on here are those projections, and I think we're getting better, but to be honest, the spring of 2016 will really be telling for us because we just don't have a lot of trend lines in the city of new development, other than Broadway, Spectrum, you know, the ones that you're very familiar with, but they're all reflected on here. And I think we were very excited that North Gate was right where we were hoping that it would be. And when you look in the, right in the middle, it says the original estimate of total pupils, and North Gate is about the sixth block, seventh block down, where the projection was 19. And I think our September number, oh, it's right there on the left, was 20. That was the actual official count. So that was exciting for us, that the methodology that we're using, the software the city's using, that it's sending us in the right direction. So I just think it's important for the community to know that. And then behind that, I know the school board is very aware, we've been really diligent the last couple of years, every year, we take our official count and we look at where our students are coming from so that we can look at what are those range of ratios, and we're looking at not only certain developments, single-family homes, but how those are trending, what's happening, where are children coming from. And the one, the one number that I do expect to go up in 2016, and it's tied to the housing assessments, we know the housing number that's on here, the 2,351, is lower than what is actually happening because of all of the split lots. So we have a lot of those that are in development right now. So we're going to try, I really hope, for next year's chart to be able to reflect where are we actually sitting as a city for single-family homes. That will go up slightly as well. So I think that's really important. That is the first link. The second link, and there is a hard copy of the second link, I know on mine, it's, there's quite a bit on it, and for some reason I was having trouble getting it to open up, but yours may open right up. The second link is, it gives you more information on the actual methodology when we look at enrollment projections and how we do that. We do contract each fall with the University of Virginia, the Weldon Cooper Center, and what you're looking at on the first page is the methodology for school enrollment projections and how they use the birth rate model, every child who's actually born in Falls Church City, and then they look at the grade progression ratio method, and that's where they're following cohorts of children as they move through the system. So their methodology is here. The page behind that is showing you the Weldon Cooper numbers. And when you look at, and again, Weldon Cooper is only, it doesn't include any economic development, so we have to take both of those and put them together. But when you look at where we are in Weldon Cooper, if we look at 2029, which is about 10 years after our building would open, just the pure growth would be 1,200 students with nothing else included. And I just think it's important for people to understand that building a high school, for instance, of 1,000 students would mean very quick construction after you move into a building. And again, this is what the experts are saying, they do the projections for the state of Virginia, they also do the projections for the Virginia Department of Education. And then behind that is the impact of population growth on our facilities, and how do we actually measure school capacity? A lot of people don't understand how we measure school capacity. And when you look at, when we say 1,500, and you look at number one, which says design capacity, this is the maximum allowable class size based on our school board policy, and also if we have any guidance from Virginia Department of Education guidelines. And if you look at what's in the George Mason program, and I put the program and this number in here specifically because this is the question that we have had at Town Hall, and just over the last week, I've had a couple people email, so where does that number come from? So the George Mason program and what's reflected in that scope is 15 core classrooms, which is like 15 teachers, and you take a maximum of 24 students. That's school board policy. Now, the reality is, you're not going to have every classroom at 24 students. That's actually very difficult to do, just to maximize every classroom. That would give you 360 on each grade level, and that's a total of 1,440 students. And that would actually be a teacher load of 96 to 120 students. And that is actually exactly where we are right now, exactly. So if we're talking about really scaling back and we want a smaller building, then we're talking about changing our policy as well, because we need, either need more kids in the classrooms. If we're only going to build for 12, or 11, or 13, that means our class sizes need to go up. And I just think that's an important thing to note. Number two talks about capacity threshold, and I know I've only been in the city four years, but I've had so many people, especially, and we even heard it on actually Saturday, talk about, we never build big enough. We open a building and it's full the day we open it, and it's so irresponsible, and, but I think it's because we get into this little battle when you're trying to build schools, and a lot of times your community can't see the future, and while the school boards are digging in the data all year long and trusting the experts, and projections are hard, but you have to look at your projections, or that is exactly what will happen, is you'll be opening a school and either reconstruct, be under construction again three or four years later, and then everybody's mad at you because you built too small. So it's a vicious cycle. So what you're looking at here is what's in the draft planned threshold. So if you look at the school year, and when the building would open in 2019-20, it's right at the bottom of that page, you'll see when the building opens and what is the tenure mark. So if you only use the grade progression method, in the center, that's at 1,200. When you come in and you look at your new dwellings projections, the single-family homes, North Gate, Lincoln, and Rushmark, that's all we have right now to base this on, you're at 1,480. And so it, you're really, that threshold is really right around, you know, 13 to 1,500, where we're bumping up against even the 20% that they tell you you should have in a building. So again, this is using expert advice based off everything that we know today. And then behind that, I think it's important to note, again, we, and especially I do, I watch what's going on in Northern Virginia. If COG or there is doing a presentation on what's happening and trending in Northern Virginia, we're paying attention to that. And this first segment from Weldon Cooper is just talking about public school enrollment trends in Virginia, and it is birth and migration that are making a huge impact in Virginia. I've highlighted some of that in yellow for you because the one thing that they note is that for Northern Virginia and for the rest of Virginia, a pattern of steady increase in total school enrollment is projected, with Northern Virginia continuing to drive nearly all growth. And by 2018, 40% of Virginia public school enrollment will be in Northern Virginia compared to 30% just back in 2000. And then the other thing that they really note is that while many communities in Northern Virginia and some school divisions elsewhere will need to embark on construction projects to house growing populations of students, building or expanding schools is expensive, and local resources will need to keep pace with a growing demand, and managing growth wisely and keeping school facilities ahead of population trends presents an ongoing challenge. And Laird Hamilton is the one that is actually the writer of this article, he does our projections. So I just want to note that. Behind that, there's another article that comes from its population growth in Washington, DC, in the metropolitan area. And League of Women Voters actually brought Stephen Fuller to Falls Church, I believe it was about a year and a half ago, and did a great presentation on a Saturday morning kind of Town Hall, just talking about what's happening in Northern Virginia and what that growth trend looks like. He says the same thing, but this is just kind of general information about what's happening in and around the region. And again, we're watching the experts in the field, and I can't reinforce that enough, that that's where our projections come from. There is a chart in here that talks about just even general population change, and I thought it was important for you to see that because it also mirrors that very first graph you saw, where it's talking about where Falls Church ranks as far as population growth. So Stephen Fuller's supporting that very first graph that John Brett actually created for us, and Mr. Kimball as well, that was a joint effort. But it's showing you again that our population in the city is not what's trending so high, it's actually our school population. So again, I provide this for your information, I think it's great information, and then for you to ask me questions, because our school board always asks very thoughtful questions if there's something that you think is confusing, or something else that we can provide that will help people understand that we didn't just pick 1,500, just to throw in a scope out of the air. Thank you. That was a lot.
Thank you, Dr. Jones. That was an excellent presentation. Any questions? Mr. Lawrence.
I've got a question on the chart or the table about the, where the students come from.
The housing chart, excuse me?
Yes.
Yes.
And on the second page, and I realize we've got a lot of split lots that, you know, got split this year, and people are building them, nobody's living in them right now, but is it odd that we had a decrease in the amount coming from single-family detached? It just seems like we're always saying, I mean, obviously, our greatest percentage is from there, but I'm trying to figure out, you know, are we going to reach an inflection point where what it really comes down to is we're going to get more growth from the apartments than we are from the single family?
I still think single-family homes will remain one of our strongest, if not the strongest driver. I also think right now, and I'm trying to get a better handle on how many of those homes, even though you see a change of 19 homes, how many of them have three-year-olds, four-year-olds, and two-year-olds? You know, I met a mom today outside of Mount Daniel, just looking at where her child will go to kindergarten, and she had two other children with her, and they were staggered. And I think there's a lot of that in the city, and Mary Beth Connolly is working diligently for us in outreach to all of the preschools. And we also, last year, if you remember on InfoSnap, when people register now, we're asking if they have little ones at home. So we're getting better at trying to figure out who are in all those homes that have children that are coming our way. So I think we're probably perhaps seeing a little bit of that, but again, that's the kind of analysis that's a little trickier. I did cross-reference everybody's address this year, when we, an address dropped off, and then tried to look at, was it replaced with a new student coming in, when a senior left, or was it somebody moving out? And there, I couldn't really find a trend that, you know, in any one direction, that when an address fell off, we didn't necessarily have a child enrolling. So when the kid first went to college, in other words, if it was their last kiddo and they no longer show up for us, the house hadn't sold yet, if that makes sense.
Yeah, I just think when people look at this number, what we need to do is remind them of what you just said was, not having a student doesn't mean you don't have kids.
Right, right.
And that's where, I mean, just, you know, on my block of Great Falls Street, we've got a ton of people who have kids, they're not student age yet, but, you know, they came in and they're staying, and they're going to be students, but, so I think this may be misleading in the sense that people will- So I think this may be misleading in the sense that people will equate students with kids, and students aren't students until they're a certain age, but they're living there and they're on their way up regardless.
Yeah, and we're looking at right now, doing a pre, pre, pre-enrollment. We're just trying to figure out how to make that happen. And all of the preschools have actually been very accommodating to say, absolutely, we'll help you do that, where the families that are in the preschools and that are out there could actually start enrolling and maybe have an event for the little bitty ones. One thing the library is telling us is that their events now are having 250 and 300 little bitty kids that didn't used to have that many kids. So they're, they've seen huge increases. We're working on a strategy, but it's a great, you know, problem to have. We love kids, so, but trying to find out how to find them. But we're only 2.2 square miles, so it's like a big Easter egg hunt, I guess, I don't know.
How many places to find?
Yeah, no, for the, for the library, it's hysterical. They have parking sections for strollers inside because people aren't going to leave their strollers outside, and they, you know, it's almost valet parking for strollers. It's absurd.
Other questions and comments?
Thank you, that's good stuff.
I would just, a couple of interesting things from the chart that Mr. Lawrence was just referencing about where, where the students come from in terms of dwellings. And the multi-unit footprint, the ratios are about half, it would seem, as they are of single-family detached. In other words, it appears that, all things being equal, a single-family detached has two kids for every one in multifamily. I think that's interesting. Another thing that I would mention with respect to the last document that you discussed, what's the name of the George Mason outfit, the, or the demographic projections that had the maps of, is it, well, no, this is Weldon Cooper. But I say this every other meeting, but in 1960 in Falls Church, 40% of the population was aged 19 or under. We're nowhere near that figure, but there is a sine wave. And if you look at census information from the late 60s into the 70s, the only areas of Virginia that experienced population declines were inside the Beltway, Arlington, Alexandria, and Falls Church. And if you look at the, the figures now, for example, the public school enrollment change, it's the exact mirror image. Now, the only place where enrollment is growing is inside the Beltway. And so I think there are some very powerful demographic trends, and I think we can't grow forever, but it certainly seems that for the next 10 to 15 years, growth is, maybe it's not really growth, but more kind of getting back to the state of affairs that prevailed not so long ago, because we, we live in a very attractive part of the, of the metropolitan Washington area, and, and people realize that, and they, they like what we have to offer, so.
Can I add one more thing about the timeliness?
Yes.
Because I think it's, I think it's worthy of noting, because a lot of people do want to reference the census data from 2010, and it's really old. And so what I try to do is follow when I'm looking at Stephen Fuller, or, or when we're getting the projections from UVA and watching their articles. And now that Laird actually does our projections, if he writes a new article, he'll send it, which has been very helpful. But his article was updated November of 14 for the data that you see on here, and then Stephen Fuller's was March of 2015. So they're trying to stay really current on this for us, which is very helpful for everybody in Northern Virginia.
All right, thank you very much, Dr. Jones. If there are no other questions or comments, we'll move on to the construction update, subject 8.06.
I think this, the school board is very aware, we do have a hearing tomorrow night. We will see tomorrow where that ends up. And, you know, we're working with Fairfax County in, in hope that the project will be able to move forward. However, I think we all know it has its challenges, just helping the, the planning commission understand the depth of the project. I did ask Ms. Goodell to put the information from last week back on here again, because it's a very thorough packet, that just kind of answers some of the questions that some of the planning commissioners in Fairfax had. So I encourage you again to look at that if you haven't had a chance. It's, it's very thorough, and everybody's working hard right now, so that's it.
Thank you, Dr. Jones. Any questions? All right, seeing none, we will move on. Future agenda topics, it's been a quiet summer, so should we, should we have more meetings and talk about more things?
We keep moving stuff to the next agenda.
The facetious light is blinking.
I have one little thing.
Ms. Carney.
I just have one small thing, and that is, you know, in the summer, we usually spend some time revisiting our three-year priorities and updating those, you know, for the next three years, and kind of doing organizational things. I think it might be helpful, somewhere in that course, to pull out the school board norms that we use to operate, and just review them among ourselves and revise them if we choose to. The reason I bring this up is it feels to me like this year we have not kept within one of our norms. And that's the norm that has to do with this particular section of our agenda, right? And that is, we generally don't spend time on things the majority of the school board isn't supportive of. And I feel like this year we've had some topics that have come back again and again that haven't had the majority of support of the board, and we've still kept, you know, hacking away at them and discussing them. And I, I just feel like that's not been a very productive use of our time. So maybe we can just pull them out and review them, won't take long, make sure we're still liking them, if not changing them or adding or deleting things, so that our meetings operate pretty cleanly.
Okay. Does anybody think that's something we should have on the agenda? I'm joking. That's a, that is a good, that is a good suggestion. Ms. Carney?
I'm sorry.
I know. But I, I think that is, that is always good to revisit our norms and to, to aspire to hew to them whenever possible. So let's, let's do that. Any other, and, and we do have superintendent's evaluation coming up. We do have the revisiting of our three-year plan and sort of doing a level set. And I think also we need to kind of do a year, year-end retrospective, so we can see how we've done. And then we aspire to get the budget process going, so that is a tall order. And, and I would like to say, this has been an enormously unquiet, unrelaxing summer. And I, I thank everybody in this room who has very cheerfully given their time, energy, and enthusiasm, and good, good cheer to what is really, I mean, this feels almost worse than the budget season. And I, I know all that we're doing is important, and there, there will come a time when summer will look like summer again. And, and so I thank you for pushing as hard as you're pushing. I, I'm trying to make things work a little faster and a little more streamlined, so that we don't spend any more time on extraneous matters than we have to. So any other items? Mr. Ankuma.
Well, I'm feeling like we're piling on. Did we have a retreat last summer, or do we have one again coming up?
We had an organization, a school board organization retreat last year.
About this time?
We have some aspirations to do a budget-oriented retreat with city council. Those are, those, that issue is in discussion right now with some on council, to see if that might be something. I don't think that we have a school board-specific retreat possible, and frankly, I don't think we would have the bandwidth to do it right now. But if you, if you have something that you'd like to spend as, as a, as a body together, by all means, please propose it.
No, I, I...
No, there is, there is no, there is no retreat in the works.
Okay.
All right. And now superintendent's report, Dr. Jones.
Right, and I will be very short. One thing I was going to mention was the work plan, and originally we had it on, and that's kind of the bumping of the agendas. It was on for tonight, but I bumped it back also because I want to make sure that on your, when we give you the review of the year, that you have the data that you need. And so, you know, we'll have the data from the food service program and have our testing information. And I'm hopeful that next week we will be able to pull a lot of that together for a first review, not rewriting the new work plan, but just updating where we were. But I'm working on that for you right now. Also, summer school is up and running and going awesome, and so we're just very pleased with that. And you'll get, you know, an update on that also, on numbers and, and how that's looking. So that is coming your way. Just as a reminder, another thing that's on the agenda later this summer is the, an update on STEAM. The principals will be in front of you, and just sharing some of the data and the work they did this year on working on their STEAM curriculum, the maker space, innovation space, whatever its name is. I don't know that it has a real name yet. I call it a zillion different things. Mr. Blue was working on that. But the, the media center at GM has been painted, they've put a new window, they're, they've moved bookshelves. We all, it actually has a window to the outside that nobody really knew was there, because it was hidden kind of behind the bookshelf, she just didn't notice it. So trying to open this space up, and I'm hopeful that if Mr. Blue and the high school admin teams worked really hard on this as well, I'm hoping they'll have it at a spot by August, that our August meeting will actually be at the high school media center, so that you can have a tour and be able to see what's there, and then we can help hold either work session or a meeting there, so that you're in the space. So lots and lots of work. Facilities and maintenance, as you know, we have a very small staff. We have more square footage than we've ever had before, and we still have the same staff we had many, many years ago. We didn't increase there. They're working incredibly hard this summer. And just, you know, kudos to all the different people. Transportation, you know, is piloting a new app, which we're excited to see if that works well, which I'm more excited about this app, I think, for if it works well in winter months, because a parent can track where their bus is. And I think for me as a superintendent, which you know I love making snow calls, it's one of my favorite things in my job. But when it really is freezing outside, and I worry about kids being at the bus stops. And if the buses are having trouble getting started, it means the kids can get stuck standing at the bus stop a little bit too long, because the bus is 10 minutes late. So this app will allow them to follow the bus on their phone, so they're, they can say, oh, this bus is still out on Broad Street, and, you know, they live over at Oakwood. So anyway, I'm, I'm excited to see how that works, and we'd like being a first for anything in Falls Church, so it goes along with our history. Great summer, everything's going super, super, and everybody's working hard. So that's it.
Thank you, Dr. Jones. Now we come to the board and student liaison comments. Mr. Sharpen, gee, you've been quiet this evening, so why don't you kick off discussions?
All right, well, a lot of high-level stuff that I didn't particularly feel the need to comment on, but it's nice to see this process for the new schools moving along. It's turning into something concrete. And I particularly like how you're leaving this to be an open, open-ended prompt, so that people can come up with creative ideas. And once those proposals come back in October, then I will have a chance to maybe look at these and, and comment further. And, and Dr. Jones, I like the app. Looking forward to pushing back my wake-up time. And, but overall, I mean, it's, it's great to see all this moving along. Thank you.
Which raises, will the app be able to change the alarm on various devices? So if it's two-hour delay, it will push the alarms forward?
No, but we do try to make those calls in the evening, if at all possible.
Okay, thank you. Thank you, Mr. Sharpen. Let's, let's get crazy and go right to left this time. Mr. Webb.
Only my group with the daycare, we have been having issues of getting a quorum for meetings. We do have a couple of things that are on the agenda, but we're just needing to get a quorum, which now, the meeting that was supposed to have happened a couple weeks ago, we're now looking at some August dates for that. So once we have that meeting, I will be able to update you at that point, but that's my only comments for tonight. Nice and quick.
Thank you, Mr. Webb. Ms. Carney.
Nothing for me.
All right, Mr. Lawrence.
Just a couple of things, like everybody else, been spending a lot of time on Mount Daniel and GM. We had a town hall this Saturday that actually had good turnout, and not in terms of numbers, but in terms of new faces that we hadn't seen. Some new people, some people who've been here for years and years, and they, they wanted to come and talk, and they had some, some great questions. Other than that, for the app, I'd just like to say you've given my son new ammunition for the argument as to why he is the only 13-year-old on the face of the earth who does not have a phone. So thank you very much. That, that really helped. Thank you.
Ms. Ankuma.
Not a lot has happened. GM and GT, we discussed at our last meeting, and nothing's happened, or haven't had any meetings since then. Did go to the Chamber Commerce Board meeting this morning, and as usual, not as well-attended, given the summer folks are out. Not a whole lot going on on there, so, yeah, same summer.
Ms. Ward.
Well, boosters and ESOL committee doesn't meet in the summer, thankfully. I've been in touch with the ESOL co-chairs, so we're moving along, getting some ideas together for next year. When we come to some sort of agreement, I'll enlighten the rest of you. The other thing is, I, I noticed that we have seven of the nine positions on the ESOL Advisory Committee build, so we would like to get two more and start off the school year with a complete committee. Any ideas? Please pass them on.
Thank you. Well, for many students in Falls Church, school is not over, as, as Dr. Jones mentioned. Summer academy is going strong. Had an opportunity to go to Washington Lee University over the weekend, and missed the forum on Saturday to see the end of the Spanish academy there. And I, I know there are kids currently involved in, I think, agriculture, math, and the, the governor's schools are really quite an asset, and I think it's a, it's a tribute to the Commonwealth that we have programs like that. And it's also a testament that there, there are kids who are willing to spend their summer going to them. So it's, it's quite something, and anybody interested who's, who's in high school or soon to be in high school should, should give that some consideration. Dr. Jones, is there any update you'd like to give regarding the turf field? I believe yesterday the planning commission voted on that, or?
City council.
City council, excuse me.
City council did approve the contract for the turf project, which was good, so that we're able to move ahead and get it replaced.
Excellent. All right, now we come to the approval of minutes. I would ask unanimous consent for approval of the minutes of June 9th and June 16th. Without objection, that is so ordered. We have end-of-year enrollment figures to peruse. Just one last question, Dr. Jones. How is kindergarten looking right now?
Kindergarten is still was hovering around the 180-ish, so we're just watching.
Okay.
And we do have enrollment at TJ, you know, this year, so the people could be having trouble finding us. We have signs up and everything, but we're just watching, watching carefully. And I will just add on the enrollment, I think it was Mr. Lawrence did ask a question about how enrollment, you know, trends for us, and he just thought it was fascinating that at the end of the year, that you lose like 19 or 20 kids, and it is very common for that to happen. That's one of the reasons when we do our projections and we're looking at enrollment, the previous topic we had, that we use that September 30th faithfully. We don't go, you know, during the school year and let it go up and down, because that gives us a consistent point in time, and that's our official number. But at the end of the year, we always lose. And as I was explaining to Mr. Lawrence, that a lot of it depends on where kids are going to school. If you're going to, to a Southern Hemisphere school, the school year starts in January. And so, you know, if you can, especially if you have a child in elementary who has finished enough of fourth grade, that wherever they're moving, they know they can go to fifth, because you're either skipping half of the year, or you're repeating. And so a lot of it just depends where kids are going. So going into international school could be the same thing, but, so it's very normal for us.
All right, and with that, we stand adjourned. Thank you very much.